I'd like to call the order of the Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, November 21st at 7:00 PM. Can all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, founded in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Moss and Selectman Smith both have an excused absence tonight. First thing, our agenda is a public hearing for the cable license renewal. Need a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll motion to open the public hearings.
Yeah, motion. Motion made in second.
All right, we have Attorney Bill August is on Zoom. He's representing cable. Bill, can you hear us?
Yes, fine, thank you. Do you want me to address the board?
Please, they just opened the public hearing.
Thank you. Good to see you. I'm Bill August, municipal council to the town of Douglas. This is what I do. I represent about 10 cities and towns a year in cable renewal. I would primarily want to hear from Patrick Aldrich, who is a cable coordinator and a lead person in the town and most familiar with the local channels, local studio, and the local programming, which is, these days, due to the rate deregulation and the program deregulation, the area that the town still have the power to negotiate. But I will just make some brief comments. Charter agreed to increase the annual funding for the local channels and the local studio to 5% of gross annual revenues. Most towns and cities feel good about a license if we achieve that increase to the 5%. The 5% is the maximum. I believe you are at the 4% right now. Patrick will have to correct me. But one reason why the towns are seeking that is because of all the cord cutting that is going on right now. There are fewer and fewer subscribers each year, so if you were to just stay level at the same 4%, over time, at the way things are going, in most towns, it results in an actual loss of funding at a time when these local studios are growing in importance. The towns are relying on the studios more for municipal media coverage, for sports, high school teams' coverage, for public access. So generally, they see the, you know, just an incremental tweak up to 5% as some kind of a security blanket to try to attain some level funding for your local facilities. Much of the license is just a continuation of what you already have. You have three community TV channels. That's how HBO got started. It's a very valuable asset, and towns are increasingly realizing, you know, the market value of a TV channel is extraordinary. And so we continued the three pegged access channels. We increased the annual funding, as I discussed. And it's a comprehensive license. I've done many licenses that are, you know, very, very equivalent, and we know we have comprehensive language about the things that are of concern to ordinary subscribers, like customer service standards and telephone response standards. And we built a good working relationship with their government relations person, John Marr, so we're grateful to him. Another person at Charter, it's legally called Spectrum now, it's a new company. It's not the old Charter, it's a new company. They're a little more distant, they're a little less involved with each community than Charter was, but they have made commitments to work closely with us through a couple of people to be available. So I think you'd say, you know, there are very strong insurance requirements on the company, and umbrella policy, and right-of-way management standards, you know, and all the nuts and bolts of a cable license. So I feel good that Charter was a good negotiation partner with us. It met us more than halfway by going up to the 5% on the annual funding. And I would just like to particularly thank everyone in the town that I had to work with. Patrick was really my, you know, constant liaison about some of the nitty-gritty of the local channels and the studio, and where it's interconnected, and, you know, where Charter has to pick up the remote video. So I can't thank him enough, because at every turn, he was just trying to be responsive and do the maximum. So I feel good about it. I would recommend that we hear from Patrick, because he lives in that local TV space. It's a full, you know, it's a lot, they crank out more hours of original programming than a lot of commercial network affiliates, who just recycle programming. So they do a lot, and I would turn it over to him.
Thank you, Bill.
And then to the public, of course, because tonight is the public hearing, to give the public, allow the public an opportunity to be heard. And then, there's a motion that I circulated to the town, which if the license is satisfactory, after the public portion is closed, the select board could take, the Board of Selectmen could vote on the motion to approve the license.
Thank you.
Good, Pat.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate that. So just to correct him, so our past license was not based on gross revenue percentage, so it was a fixed dollar amount. And we actually never met the fixed dollar amount. We never asked for as much as we could, almost by half. So we kept at a very conservative rate throughout this past license. So we, based on estimations from Charter for 2022, we're at about 3.8%. So, just to correct that. But, you know, the Cable License Subcommittee and I both recommend the Board of Selectmen approve the renewal of the cable TV license with Charter Spectrum in order to ensure the continued Douglas TV operations for another 10-year period. If we sign at the 5% of gross revenue as offered in the draft, it kind of gives us the maximum amount, which is allowed by federal law, so it puts us in the best possible position from a standpoint of the contract. We actually asked them to add to Section 13.3A, which is how they fund the pegged access. We asked them to include language which allows us to ask for less than the 5% if we deem that that's, if that's what we need. Just like the old contract, we had a fixed dollar amount, but we could ask for less if we wanted to, which we did year to year. We can do the same with this contract. So signing at the 5% doesn't necessarily glue us at 5%. It just gives us that maximum amount that we could then look at and say, all right, where do we need to be?
Why wouldn't we ask? I mean, could we?
Yeah. Why not take the 5%? I think just based on needs assessment, so I mean, there's a couple of different ways you could look at it, where why not take the maximum amount, and if we don't use it, we can bank it? Or what we've been doing is just taking what we look at, what we need. So we're not trying to take, we're not trying to, we're not asking for more than we need.
There's another important reason in the spirit, you know, there ain't no free lunch. Everything, one way or the other, is built into their rate structure. So some towns take the, have the philosophy that they're going to be raising their rates no matter what, because they can. And the rate increases are really attributable to things like, you know, the unbelievable price increases for ESPN and other commercial programming. But every little bit, the companies do add into the rate structure. So when you do go up to 5%, that could become a small portion of what they call the rate pass-through. So that's why, another reason why you can't, we did go ask for that option to decrease in addition to not needing it.
No, that makes sense.
Possibly not needing it, possibly not needing it, the full amount.
That makes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, this is limitations of teleconferencing. Is there a situation in which if we don't accept that, then we can hold the line on Spectrum's rates in any way, shape, or form? Or is that just a ship that's going to sail anyway?
Yeah, it's, no, rates are deregulated. So we can't regulate or freeze the rates. Boston had even asked, had a two-year rate freeze, contractual and voluntary, and the courts threw it out, saying that was like backdoor rate regulation. So there's no rate regulation.
Okay. Thank you.
So does that mean that they're going to charge you the increase that they're allowed anyways? Regardless whether you use 3.8% or 5%?
Well, we really don't know, because, you know, the rate increases are changed from year to year, and we're not privy to their whole strategy. But, you know, it is likely that it will be, in one way or another, built into the rate structure and passed through, you know, and then it becomes a one-time thing on the bill, and then it's flat, because the pass-through is built in. You know, it's in the, compared to, you know, like, major rate increases in every other utility and health insurance and everything else, this is probably one of the smallest ones you'll ever encounter. But, you know, that is part of the equation. But you have the flex, you have the right at any time, with, I think it's 60-day notice, to have them, you know, I have to go back and look at the, you know, with advance written notice. They can crank it back down to the level you're at now, or anything you want.
And I would just add to that, that my personal philosophy is just that, I'm just trying to be fair to our, what I look into, sort of our shareholders, or the people that are paying their cable bill. And I'm just making sure, you know, I just want to keep it to a conservative view of what we need and what we need to do and what we're doing, and if they're happy with that, then, you know, there's not a lot of growth projected as far as where we're going to go with what we're doing. You know, I know last license, we had a discussion about creating a production studio, and I think that that has sort of become deprioritized. So as far as a giant build-out like that, we don't, we don't really have any, any plan for that right now. We're just trying to keep everything level. Basically, our budget comes up against technology changes constantly, because things will change in the industry, and you can kind of hang back a little bit and stick with the old stuff, but only so long. You know, so we have to change with the times. You know, the remote stuff, hybrid meetings, have kind of changed the landscape a little bit, technology-wise, so it's basically what we're up against. We're not, we're not looking to build something brand-new, we're just trying to keep everything we have going.
What if we move upstairs at some point? Would you like a little buffer in that peg account for a build-out of something?
It would depend on what, you know, the residents here would want from that, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen a lot of movement in that direction, where people would want some sort of production facility to create, you know, entertainment programs. I mean, there are programs we could create with minimal studio, but the other problem with that, as far as I would see, is that that committing to, you know, a studio build-out like that puts us into a new place, where now we're maintaining all the stuff we have currently, and then a whole batch of other technologies that we're trying to, you know, keep afloat as well. So, I don't know, I mean, I think that if the town wanted to move that way, we certainly could, but it hasn't seemed like something that's been a priority to me, as far as what residents have asked for, you know.
Yeah, I mean, do you want to add to that?
So he said that we, there's no regulation that comes within raising rates. Is there anything we as a town can do to protect the consumers from raised rates? Or we mostly just have the whim of Spectrum?
Well, it's state-regulated, as to what they can raise it to, correct?
No, I mean, it's indirectly related to the question, and I, this license, by the way, you know, for the benefit of the public, they often are not aware, it is a totally non-exclusive license. So that non-exclusive, which is a great thing about this license, if, you know, many towns, but not all, but about a third of the towns in Massachusetts were able to bring in competition based on the non-exclusivity language, and there was a window where Verizon was running around talking up overbuild licenses, and so, you know, Verizon has built down in some cities. So competition is usually the best source of, you know, some discipline of the rates, because then the company is looking over its shoulder, and it's trying to, it's, it's competition, so that has some, inhibits the rates to some extent. So theoretically, you know, one could look for competition. Right now, no one is knocking on doors competing, but that had sort of been a rollercoaster ride. There have been waves of competition over the last 20 years, where RCN came in, picked up 20 licenses, then Verizon came in. So you could, you know, I'm just saying, you have to always keep your ear to the ground for the possibility of competition. But other than that, the factors we already discussed, you know, there is no rate regulation, and unfortunately, they do look at everything as part of the rate structure. So those are the, those are the parameters.
Thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, anybody in the room have anything they want to add to this?
Lisa.
Huh? Lisa? Name and address, please.
60 Oak Street. I'm a consumer, I want to share, and I'm sure you've heard this before, the rates are exorbitant. It is a monopoly. I understand this is basically to contract for the studio and things like that, but I want to ask the board, how is our attorney here paid? Is it through the cable resources, or is it through your account? Or how exactly is his, is his funds covered?
Pat, do you have an answer to that?
I do, yes. Cable is paying for cable counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Don't see any other questions. Look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move? Second.
Motion's made in second, all in favor? All right. Okay, they're looking for a vote on this. In our packet, we do have a suggested motion. One of you two care to read that?
Sure, I make a motion that acting in its capacity as the statutory cable television licensing issuing authority pursuant to Mass. General Laws 166A, excuse me, in finding that the cable license renewal proposal, Spectrum Northeast LLC reasonably meets the license and cable-related renewal needs and interest of the public and the town, and finding that the, and that Spectrum's financial and technical qualifications and Spectrum's local programming channels, facilities, financial support, and services are reasonable to meet town cable license needs. And based on the town of Douglas's cable license subcommittee recommendation, that the Board of Selectmen approve and execute the proposed contract or license, I move approval.
Motion's made in second, and any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do we need a roll call vote, because we have two absent?
No.
No? Okay. Thanks, Pat.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Good night, folks, thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You too. You too.
Be careful out there.
Next thing on our agenda is a sign appeal for Shudo Bookstore and Sandwich Board sign. Representative?
Yep. Hi, everyone, this is Zach Shudo.
You can come up if you want.
Have a seat.
Have a seat.
Feel welcome.
All right. Okay.
You do that building on Main Street, you can sit anywhere you want.
Hello, everyone, does, are these on?
Yeah, they're on.
Okay. Owner of Shudo's Bookshop, and I'm appealing the sign, Sandwich Board sign violation that was issued to me in early October, or brought to my awareness in early October. The, the violation states that the sign is on the town common and is a, poses a potential hazard for pedestrians walking by, because it was, at the time, positioned partially on the sidewalk. And also, it is not in front of our storefront, which, as I was informed, it should be. However, our store, if you've been there, is on the corner, around the corner of the real estate office, so it's on Pleasant Street and Main Street. And we really need that sign to get eyes to our storefront and to direct people. We've had, before we had the sign, we had a lot of people come tell us they had difficulty finding us, even though we are on Google Maps. And then, once we put it out there, we've had many people say that they just look for the sign now, and that's how they, that's how they get there. So when I was issued the violation, I called Mr. Kenneth.
Yeah, Fraser.
Yep. And tried to discuss what I could do about it, and we didn't really come to a conclusion, so that's why I'm here now. I have moved the sign now to the corner of Pleasant and Main Street for the time being, and this is completely off the sidewalk, and it's off the common, essentially, too. It's just really right on a corner of the grass there. It's a movable sign, we put it out when we're open, and then we take it back into the store when we close. And really, I'm just hoping that we're allowed to keep it there for the sake of attracting new customers to our store.
You have anything on it? You have anything on it?
For the sake of transparency, I spent the last 10-plus years on zoning boards, so I'm a little familiar with some of these rules and regulations. The, I'll start off by saying you did a very nice job with the store.
Thank you.
You did a very nondescript signage on your, on your building, but it's come back to haunt you, right?
Yeah.
So that's one of your challenges. This, this sandwich board movable signs under 9.3.1.13, sandwich boards, sandwich board movable signs such as a sandwich board sign or menu board for restaurants intended to be used on a regular basis are allowed, one per premise, only provided that the signs stand on length and do not exceed four feet in height. Whenever we're looking at bylaws and things like that, and this is something I've learned on zoning board over the years, is you also have to consider the intent, right? And the intent was for a business to be able to place one in front of their building and then take it back up, similar to like the Goodness store down the street. The challenge that you have with using that particular bylaw is your sidewalk is not much bigger than three feet wide. It's very narrow in that portion, so it doesn't allow you to put a sign there without impeding foot traffic. It's just not allowed under, under the bylaws that we have. I would, myself, I would consider use, trying to put some different signage on your building that would attract the, the customers that you want to attract.
Right.
Putting it, we're challenged with this, we had a recent situation with another business in town with a sandwich board sign, and they weren't allowed to keep it. It's just, it's just not allowed. From my understanding, you're not the only one that received a violation notice, there was, there was another business that it wasn't in front of their business, and it's just not allowed under the bylaws. So that, that's all the enforcement agent is acting on.
Right. I understand.
So I just want to help you understand where we're at with this.
Yeah.
I'm, myself, personally, I'm challenged with allowing something like that, because it's a clear violation of what the bylaw is.
Yeah.
And they're there for a reason, so.
I understand that. Yeah, I completely understand the reasoning behind the violation. I'm essentially coming to asking for an exception with, given the circumstances, that there is a, there's a portion of the town common unused, it's even behind those, those stone pillars that held up the chain. It's like right on the corner of the grass, so it's not impeding pedestrians, it's off the sidewalk completely.
I believe that's church property, there is, huh?
We, yeah.
Do you know that? Mr. Fraser?
Ken Fraser, building of which? That property in back of those stones, I believe it's a church property, I don't have a.
Right.
I clarified, I didn't look into the deed on it to see where it is. So currently, you're either in the, in the town's right-of-way on the sidewalk, or you're in the church property without permission, and the zoning bylaw says, or the general bylaw says that it needs to be on the premises, but that's why the auto was issued.
And that goes back to the intent that I explained at the beginning. The intent was in front of your premise.
Right.
And like a lot of our bylaws that we have, it's not really spelled out clearly, but you have to consider the intent, because otherwise, you could just put it on everybody's yard, right? So you'd have sandwich board signs everywhere.
Right.
So that wasn't the intent of the bylaw.
If I may, I mean, I could recommend that you get ahold of the property owner yourself, and they could come down and have a discussion with regards to potentially getting something else up there, so that could be a sign that you take in and out off the building or something like that. That would actually probably help you out, if you could get them to agree to mounting it on a corner in an appropriate way that the select.
I would disagree with that, because the, it's his building, his premise, not the neighbors', not the churches'.
No, no, I'm talking on 295 Main Street building, the building he's located in.
That's his building, isn't it?
It's not his building.
It's not mine.
Oh, okay. The owner of the building.
I misunderstood, I thought you were talking about the church property.
No, no. So I mean, that would be something I could recommend at that point.
Even, even if it was a hanging one out front, it's something that you could come back for, provided that it was anchored properly, it's not unusual to have something like that.
Yeah, I do hesitate to, to take that, that route, just because of the permanency of installing something that will hold the sign. It's nice to be able to just put the, the sandwich board out during store hours, bring it back in, that way it's not a problem for anyone. And if, say, there's like Oktoberfest, and there's a bouncy house or something, the sign can be moved, it doesn't have to be there. I just fear that if we were to, if I was to request with the property owner putting in a structure so I could hang a sign or something, then it just, now that space is completely unusable, because you have this permanent thing there.
And there is precedence in town to put up a sign not on or near the business itself. We had that gift authority sign on 16th for a number of years that sent people two miles that east to the Tatro building at the time. So there is a process. I would, you know, as I was standing with the chairman, I'd check with the landowner, see if that's something that they're amenable to, and come back for us, is the best thing you can do.
Yeah, I mean, do you have anything on that? You good? Anybody in your audience have anything on that? Would the board like to move to a boat, and what do you want to do? Would the board like to move to a vote, and what do you want to do?
Well, yeah, he's, he's appealing the decision of the building commissioner, so what we would be voting on is to either uphold the decision of the building official or grant him permission to have the sandwich board sign. So, what, it's always done in a positive manner, if you're choosing to make a motion. So, you would make a motion, I would, I would think, make a motion to approve the sandwich board sign for Shudo's bookstore.
A motion to approve the sandwich board sign for Shudo's bookstore?
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Does this have to be done tonight?
No.
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 So, would you come back, talk to the church, and then see if you can come up with something before we act negatively towards the appeal?
Yeah, yeah, I can talk to them.
I think, working collaboratively, there's a solution there. We just have to find it.
Sure.
You want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah.
I'm looking for a motion to continue, then.
Make a motion to continue the sign appeal discussion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all in favor.
Aye.
Do we have room on the next agenda of December 5th?
On Friday, yes.
Yes. December 5th. Come back.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yes.
For Ms. Freeman to reach out to Mr. Bowen to clarify the difference between an appeal and a waiver.
Okay.
They're not the same thing. Appeal is typically taken if there's an error of fact, or an error in the interpretation of, of the law by the enforcement.
Yep.
And not finding error, you would not be able to simply grant a waiver, because you choose to.
So, there'd be two things that.
This bylaw doesn't have a provision for waiver if the sign is not in the right-of-way. You have really two regulatory schemes here. One is the sign law in general, and one is specifically the placement of certain forms of signage in a public right-of-way, which is, as highway commissioners, you already have your say-so over this town property, common as well. The real common, not the church's front yard, the other common, the real.
Right.
So, that is something that I think you should get Mr. Bowen's opinion on before you enter.
So, there'd be, there'd be two different things that we need to ask him.
Is that clear?
Yep.
Thank you. Did you understand what he was explaining? Yeah. Okay. All right, so the next thing on our agenda is the Chapter 61 policy, second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of suggested edits. First of all, on page two of the document, second, I guess you'll call it a paragraph. I know my voice is thin, so I want to turn that. That's not going to help. When you have six kids, you lose your voice more than most people. Anyway, I'm not going to say why. It reads, "The notice of intent should include..." Shoulda, woulda, coulda, and a dime will get you a cup of coffee, but not when we're writing policies. I'd like to strike "should", replace it with "shall". And then, the concern that was raised after the first reading, my notes exactly are, "Can we add provisions around stamping and acceptance?" And I would recommend doing that on page three. At the top of the page, to follow the words "120-day period", to insert the following, "No town employee may stamp or deem the notice as accepted, as complete, without town council's opinion as provided below", because there is a provision in this policy, deeper into page three, in the Town Response Requirements, that Town Council, I'm just reading the words, "Town Council will review the notice of intent to make sure the notice is proper and complete." So, the clock won't start on the town until Town Council says it does. And stamping something as having been received simply means the document came in that day and triggered other timelines within the policy, but does not deem by itself, and it shall not be deemed as acceptance of the notice as complete.
So, it doesn't start the tolling.
Doesn't start tolling.
I remember.
Yeah, you're like tolling. Not to be confused with Toll House.
Yeah.
But I think that covers the, the concern that we had about people showing up with random documents at the clerk's office. The clerk is the gateway to town hall, is in the routine of stamping things is when they, when they're brought in. And in this case, we just don't want that stamp to be considered acceptance of the notice as complete.
Anything else on the, at the table? Have anything to add to this?
I do it.
Anybody in the audience? Yes, Lisa?
Lisa Mosinski, 60 Oak Street. I just want to make, I guess I want to make sure that that completely reflects what you spoke about at the first reading, Mr. Chair, because I got the impression that there was a concern that the document, or the approval could move through the system, like at a building permit stage or something like that, and it could be missed, that this was actually chapter property. So, does, does the language change right there, the suggestion? Does that adequately meet your concern?
Because what we had talked about at the, at that first reading was about having Chris putting his eyes on this, since he would be the most up-to-speed person on the Chapter 61.
Well, you shared an example, like from other towns where you, other towns that you work in, and I.
Yeah, to get sign-offs from every department, yeah.
It's more ironclad, yeah.
So, what I had explained is similar towns, other towns that I've gone to, is I would have to get sign-offs from War Department, Highway Department, tax collectors, assessors, and all these different people to make sure, before it was accepted. How would this, I'm trying to remember what we were talking about, the, but, what Matt just explained was the, when they come in and they just give us a notice, right? What you're talking about is something separate. They, if they came in for a, a building permit or something like that, it would, all of a sudden, oh, wait a minute, that's not the same owner, that was on the 61A. Is that what you're referring to? Something like that?
I believe so.
Yeah. So, aside from this document, Mr. Administrator, would we have something, are we putting some sort of policy in place that would ensure that it doesn't slip through the cracks, I guess? It's a thought, or a question.
I think what we're basically saying is we want there to be.
Some sort of.
At the hand of the principal assessor, a, I want to call it a database, because it won't be that big, but a list of all the properties in 61.
Yeah.
That would flag, if somebody comes in with any kind of proposal, especially A&amp;Rs. A&amp;Rs are the issue, because if you're coming in with a more significant subdivision proposal, it's going to get pulled apart and checked against the million records. It's the A&amp;Rs, because more or less, as of right, subdivision of land with proper frontage. And we have defaulted to the position now in town that those, any A&amp;R is a notice of intent to convert, and that, and that we'll treat it that way, because we don't want to get behind on the time.
Yeah.
So, we want to proceed very expeditiously. And I suppose you could, that's not what my notes said when I wrote this down, so that wasn't what I was looking to do here. We can do that for a third reading.
I, I think, to, to expand on that thought, is to share that list with people in community development, because that's the prob, that's the point in which it's going to potentially go through, right? So, if the principal assessor has this list of 61 properties, share it with both Jackie and Jen, so they have a list there, because they're the point, they're the single point of contact, right?
Ken left. I, I'm trying to remember where we are with e-permitting and what we require the assessors to sign off on, and at what step. But it's, it's really part of the A&amp;R.
But there's not, like you said, not a, a large list of them, so it wouldn't be a heavy task for them to just double-check on.
It's a field in our existing database. It's just a query. I mean, we already have the list. It's a question of what do you do with it?
Right.
And we can draft anything we need to.
Well, just to try to close the, the gateway, I guess. Anything else? Anybody? No.
I still think you do need the language that I just suggested, though.
Right, so.
It closes the door on that.
Yep.
We've had more than one end around, in the six years I've been here, where people have dropped things off at the town clerk's office on a Friday to start tolling a statute, right?
Yep. So, you want a, while we don't have any possible vote, so you're just going to add that language into our third reading?
Unless it's objected from the board, I'll just, we'll update the copy.
Yeah, one second. When we put that language in there, we can just put it in red, so it just, it'll jump out at us, so then we'll know exactly what it is. Yes, Lisa?
I just have a question with process. So, does this go on the agenda for the next meeting, as the third reading?
Yes.
And then, you vote to accept it or not?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Well, there, there is only three readings, right? So.
Right, but there's still nothing automatic.
Right. So, we, we could still continue if we needed to. There's a minimum of three.
Right.
Okay. Nobody else has anything on that? We're going to move on to number four. Lisa gave me a bunch of homework.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may summarize.
Yes.
A landowner may donate or sell development rights on agricultural property to the Department of Agricultural Resources. And the process that DAR follows is not terribly unlike the process DCR follows, when they're buying forest land. They provide the town with notice, hey, we're going to buy this. And it's not really an up-or-down vote of the local select board, saying it's okay to go ahead and buy it. The, part of the process that the select board is required to participate in is the announcement of the transaction. And in this particular case, there are two issues. One is the announcement of the transaction, and the other is the waiver of the waiting period. In this particular case, DAR is asking that, it wasn't even asking the town, it was asking our regional planning agency whether or not they had any objection to the waiver of the waiting period, because there's looking, they're looking to get a closing. This puts the town really kind of on the sideline, and you can't really do much here, except decide whether or not you're going to make the announcement. In the past, when the select board decided not to make the announcement on a piece of forest land that was going to be bought, DCR did not consummate the sale, because a checklist item had not been completed. And thank God, that's the way bureaucrats think, I guess. Somebody didn't make an announcement, so, oh my God, we can't have a, a real property transaction. That's the weirdest thing in the world, but that's how they interpret it. I can just say, from the point of view, you know, I interacted with the regional planning agency, and I didn't feel like it was a good place for the town to interject itself with a, one of your rights as a property owner is to sell pieces of your bundle of rights off, if you choose to. The problem here is that this land's been 61, and it might have been a desirable piece of property for the town to acquire at some point, either in the near-to-immediate future, for its own building needs, because of the access to Main Street and the location near other town facilities. You're not going to get that chance. You're not going to get the opportunity to exercise any right of first refusal. The statute pretty much knocks you out of that, the ability to do that. Having said that, being of the ilk that I am, you know, it's not a terrible thing that somebody wants to take an open lot, rather a large piece of, by today's standards, a large piece of farmland, and, and let it stay that way forever, that close to the town common and the historical center of towns. A nice gesture, and hopefully, others will follow it. But in this particular case, it just puts us in a tough spot. We do have other properties on Main Street that are not as amenable to development as this one.
If the state ever took it, could they ever turn around and take that back out of this section?
Yes.
And would we get the option?
I did this research, and no. Like, you know.
What is the likelihood of that, though?
Zero.
Yeah.
I'm just weighing up all the thoughts of what.
No, I got you.
What the administrator just explained to us. Not reading it, and what does that gain? Gain the town? Is it in the town's best interest to, to try to block it? Because if they really want it, they're going to, they're going to move forward in anyways.
One would presume.
It's the desires of the board. Do we want to move forward and acknowledge this, or not?
It's been a long day. Are we acknowledging that they want to keep this open?
That, that the, it's going to be a, an acquisition by, for agricultural preservation.
Yeah. If that, if that is the desire of the land.
It'll keep more open space, and.
Yeah. That's the desire of the landowner, right? I'll hardly support that.
You agree with that?
Yeah, I agree. The people own the property, they want to do what they want to do, their property puts to give the rights over.
All righty. So, we have a notice of proposed acquisition of agricultural preservation restriction on property in the town of Douglas. In compliance with General Law, Chapter 7C, Section 37, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts acting by and through its Department of Agricultural Resources, hereby gives notice, that is, proposes to acquire an agricultural preservation restriction on real property identified herein for the purpose of protect, protecting in perpetuity its superior and productive agricultural resources by preventing their conversion to other uses. The application received by M.D.A.R. indicates that the property is owned by Michael F. Cotter and Mary S. Maloney, and consists of parcels located on Main Street in Douglas, as a proxy representative on the attached maps. The APR may encompass all or parts of the area shown. The current use of the property is primarily for cut flowers, blueberries, and eggs. The following, following the recording of the APR, the use of the subject property is limited to agricultural use, as more particularly set forth in the APR document, the General Law's Chapter 184, Section 31, and the regulations of the Department. Law's Chapter 184, Section 31, and the regulations of the Department, 330 CMR, 22 Massachusetts Department of Agriculture. And then there's a second portion of it that I was instructed to read. The closing for this project is time sensitive and therefore the Commonwealth is asking that the vote agree to waive the 120-day notice period to 60 days in order to expedite So I guess I'm looking for is a motion to agree with the notice for proposed acquisition and consent to reduction of notice period for Main Street Land Parcel, 198-67.
So moved?
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next thing on our agenda is an appointment to the Capitol Improvement Committee. Chris Pupka, 122 West Street. For the sake of transparency, it was a suggestion made to me as being the chairman of the Capitol. I approached him. He agreed. He showed interest and felt that it was also a good position for him to fill for the town. He's not in attendance tonight. I don't think anybody has any questions about this or we can just move to a vote.
Make a motion that we approve Chris Pupka for a term on the Capitol Improvement Committee for a term of one year?
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chris is odds for a year. And next thing on the agenda is the appointment of Planning Board alternate associate member, which is Michael DeRose. Would you like to come up?
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening. Tell us a little bit about your interests.
Well, first of all, I actually was doing the math while I was sitting there. I've lived in Douglas half my life. It doesn't seem possible, but the reason that I moved here was that I liked, I like small towns and I like the feel of a small town. So, and I retired this summer, so I said, hey, I've got some time that I can do some things and maybe help the town. So I looked into what opportunities there were. There was a alternate on the zoning board and the planning board and I, so I know I applied for both. Missed out on the zoning board, but ended up the planning board and seems like a pretty good fit, actually. I'm an engineer.
Yeah, why'd you miss out on the zoning board? Why'd you miss out?
Somebody else got the position.
No, it's a five-member board with two alternates, so...
Really?
Yep.
Oh.
There's two alternates on the...
Really?
On the zoning board. You're looking at me a little confused, but, but anyway, I'm just, that's fine.
Yeah, that was, that was my first, my first choice.
Yep.
And, but it really doesn't matter. I mean, I want to start somewhere.
Right.
And...
We need help all across the board, so if you want to raise your hand, it's welcome.
Yeah. And, you know, as an engineer, I mean, I'm an electrical engineer, but that doesn't matter. Engineers solve problems. And I have done that my whole life. I'm also experienced with large capital projects, long-term projects, short-term projects, all kinds of different project management. So I probably have a lot of skill I can offer in different areas. So I figured, start somewhere. And that's a simple one.
Yep. Planning board, the, in an elected position as a, as a regular member, we can appoint the alternate position. Is something that you would consider running for a position down the road?
Probably.
If you...
Yeah.
Just curious.
No, I thought it was a good, you know, as an alternate, it's a good way to get your feet wet and see how it works.
Absolutely. Yep. Anybody have any questions?
No, I think it's great. Make a motion that we approve. What's the term on this? Is there a term?
I think it's 15 years.
I heard that, I did. That was...
It can either be three or five, and that's normally determined by the chair when the recommendation comes about, but it was never determined.
All right.
So why is it the five?
Well, three's a commitment.
What would you like? Would you like three or five?
Three's fine. Yeah. Can we reapply or, you know?
Or renew.
I do like Lisa's tactics, but that's...
Make a motion that we approve Mike DeRose as an alternate on the planning board for a three-year term beginning today.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
You'll have to check with community development, find out when the next meeting is.
Yes.
You have to get Swan in with the town clerk before you, next meeting.
I'll send you a letter.
Yep.
And explain everything you need to.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda is discussion on the moratorium for road paving and road opening. Bob didn't want that. He, he brought himself a comfy chair. You can have the other one, Bob.
You can have this one. Bob, take this. I'm fine.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mr. Adam Franco, Mr. Bob Menarich, and Mr. Bob Sullivan.
Good evening.
So as you guys know, you know, Bob, Bob and myself have been looking at, you know, these projects that we're going through, North Street, Gilboa Street, South Street. And one of the things that we realized was that the town doesn't have a road moratorium in place to prevent people from digging up our newly paved roads without consequences, you know, without repaving or... So after some discussion on our last project, we decided we wanted to present something upfront to the Board of Selectmen as the Road Commissioner's recommendation to put a policy in place for this. Basically, like I said, we spend a lot of money on roads. Capitol is the Capitol chairman, you know what we get every year. We ask for more than that. We take as much as we can get to try to, and we hate to see someone come by in, in six months and dig up our new road. So this is basically the purpose of our road moratorium. Bob and Bob did a lot of legwork on this, so I'll let them speak to that.
Yeah, not only the roads that Adam is putting through, but we're just about ready to turn over a mile and a half of roads to the town from the Mass Works and the EDA grants. So there's another source of new roads to the town.
Yep.
Again, we don't have a moratorium. We worked with Uxbridge last year on their section and we were informed of their road moratorium, so I think it's about time we consider having one.
This is from you, Bob? The moratorium?
Yeah, I just drafted something quick here. I didn't put a ton of effort into it to...
Right.
Because I know you had some recommendations on your own that you would, you would come up with and just wanted to kind of get a sense of what direction you want to go before we...
Yeah, what I wanted to do was get this started sooner than later before we ended up with a problem. I don't, unless everybody thinks that we should solve this problem tonight, I think that there's a little bit of work that needs to go into it with the town administrator and these two departments that are here, or three departments. I forget, you have a department.
Down to one and four.
But the two that are going to deal with this problem down the road and like to see some conversation between you guys, just so you can refine what the, what this should actually read that can protect us. Some of that information that I, that I received, I forwarded to Matt, so he's going to use some of that for information if nothing else.
And I have a lot more on top of this.
Right.
I did notice that a lot of the towns only kind of have that first paragraph as a, as their moratorium and they don't have any details, which I don't really like.
Yeah, you're going to need some details because they could just make a little simple trench and then you're dealing with that problem.
And that's, I kind of wanted to address all the different scenarios and how we can go about it to make sure that the town ends up with a good product at the end.
Yep.
I mean, through this, the projects that we've done in the past year and a half, we've seen the difference between different people doing work. And we certainly don't want to end up with, you know, Gilboa or North Street looking like Northeast Maine.
Right.
In a year or two, so...
Yep.
So once we, once we redo a road, we'd rather have it last as long as we can and, you know, take the proper steps to ensure any work that's done in them is done in a manner that will make them last.
Yep.
And we just opened up one of our new roads last week.
Yeah.
Three holes.
I seen you in the hole.
I was there. Not in the hole.
And a lot of the stuff, I like, I'll be working the next two months on the new paving plan coming up and a lot of, Bob and I work great together, so I'll go through, figure out what's going to happen. I'll discuss with Bob, make sure he's got no utilities, anything he wants to replace. So we plan ahead. This actually forces us even more to plan ahead, which is, we already do that, but just it, it forces the issue to, does Bob want to replace a water main on this road? So I'm not going to pay, but I'll skip this one. And, you know, if he wants to change something, it, it really helps us internally also besides outside companies coming in.
As part of that, could you come up with a idea of how many, how much lineal distance that you've done on roads, whether it's through the EDAs process or through your own chapter 90? A lot of people don't realize how much work is actually getting done and where we sit, we're actually aware of what you're getting done, but the chatter out in social media doesn't, if they don't drive down the road, they don't realize they're actually fixing it. So it might be helpful for people to digest what you're actually doing. I don't care about the names of the roads because I don't want to hear that you did your road and not my road and nonsense, but something that says the amount of distance you actually accomplished over the last few years. And most of it's been since the, the override. A lot of work's been gotten done from, since then, so...
Yeah, definitely. I mean, a lot of people, and one thing people don't see is the drainage that goes in. They just, you know, they're looking for the smooth top, you know, but South Street is a great example. We've had 10 cross culverts with catch basins. The whole project's 1.2 million just for under a mile of road, but it's all the cross drains that are actually in the swales on the side that, that are costly. It's not the asphalt alone, but...
Right. Even the little bridges, like the Cedar Street Bridge, it ate up your, your whole budget in one year and is...
Correct.
It's what, 30 feet long?
Exactly. And I have all those numbers, so I can put something together, no problem.
And even during the project that we just did, you know, we identified a culvert that was failing.
Right.
When we went past it with the water main, I figured what the dollar number was total on that for the...
76,000.
Yeah, it's just good for the general public to be aware of the effort that you guys are putting into this stuff.
That being a small culvert that we, that we repaired and replaced, it was, you know, $76,000 that we shuffled around trying to find the money for.
We had the luxury of using the EDA, 80% getting paid for by federal government because it was an emergency condition technically.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the efforts of everybody getting these jobs done.
Yeah. And I know your number you're looking for is 6,000 feet for us, for EDA Mass Works.
Don't go jumping the gun, yeah. Do your homework. It might be 6,002 feet.
That's just this portion, but we know South Street, South River Street.
Right. I'll be able to pull that all together, no problem.
It is just, it would be helpful for people to just understand what you're getting done and, and probably help yours and Lisa's phone from ringing all the time. So as far as this moratorium, I guess the, you think you'd be, have something for our next meeting or you...
Your next meeting, I have a meeting, so it's in my...
You want to push it out a couple meetings, Matt? The 19th?
I guess I'm looking for some clarity on what it is that you want. Do you want to draft bylaw to be brought to town meeting? Are you looking for a policy that will tie us over until we can...
I think it would be a policy to get us through so we can properly prepare something for a bylaw for town meeting in the spring. I don't want to wait until spring because by then...
Right, correct.
Half the roads will be ripped up. So if we can get a policy in place to, that carry us over, I think would be the best approach.
And how detailed do you want the policy?
It's up to you guys. You guys are the road guys. And we tell you, you can rip them apart, but you're the ones that know how to technically do it, so...
So it's a policy that'll need three readings?
Yep.
So... As soon as you get the first draft, as long as we have something that's moving through the process, we can add to it.
Fortunately, we're going into winter, so the chances of street opening are slim to none, so...
Yeah.
Now's the time, but we definitely want to get something in place just to protect the town and all the work that's been done. Anybody else have anything on this? Okay, thanks, guys.
Okay, you're welcome.
Adam, don't go anywhere.
Yeah, me and X two.
Okay. The next thing is the Highway Department approval for a part-time winter employee.
I had a, sorry.
Just to be technical for a second, the only thing that you approve as a board is the assignment of this rate of pay.
Okay, so I had a gentleman, a retired employee from the Natick DPW Sanitation Department. He retired, I want to say, he said, six or seven years ago. He moved away to Arizona, recently in the last two years, moved back to town, just looking for some part-time work. It actually worked out very well because we have a need, we have a gentleman retiring December 31st. So I was hoping just for snow, snow and ice, sanding and plowing, to put this gentleman in one of our smaller trucks. He'll fill the route for the gentleman that's retiring until we can permanently fill the spot. So basically, we have here, Mr. Kraminsky will be driving one of our small dump trucks for the snow and ice storms and if approved, he'll be starting as an MS-3, step five at $20.83 an hour.
Sounds like a no-brainer because your, your highway subs are around 95 for the same truck?
Correct, 95, yep. 103, so, yep.
Anybody have any questions for Adam on this? So you just need a motion to approve the rate of pay, Mr. Administrator?
I approve rate of pay at MS3, step five.
I'll motion to approve the temporary rate of pay at MS3, step five, at $20.83 an hour.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor? Aye. That was easy, Adam. Now you're up to handicap spots.
Yes.
So the next thing on our agenda is St. Dennis Church's request for three additional handicap spots on Caswell Court.
Correct. So Mr. Richards, who's the maintenance gentleman for the St. Dennis Church, approached me probably a month and a half ago requesting to put three handicap spots on the side of Caswell Court against where the church is. I know many years ago, there was parking spots there. Both sides are now no parking. He stated with the aging patrons at the church, they're running out of handicap spots that are close to the ramp. So he's requested to add three handicap spots on Caswell Court. Caswell Court is 27 feet wide. I went and measured it and the handicap spot is eight feet wide, so basically it will leave 19 feet open. I did send this to the fire chief and he did approve it as his apparatus will be able to fit, no problem. And I just wanted the blessing of the Board of Selectmen for these three spots. They'll put up the signs themselves and paint the spots. It won't have anything to do with the town, but they are on our roadway.
Is that crosswalk handicap accessible on the sidewalk?
Correct, it is. It does have a ramp right in front of which of these three spots we'll have. It has, these three spots will be right behind the crosswalk going up Caswell Court on the left-hand side.
Just a question, I'm not opposed to it. You said there was parking spots there in the past and now there's no parking on both sides. Is there a particular reason for that?
They expanded the parking lot in the rear. Those were regular parking spots at one time before they did their larger parking lot up in the back, which is far away from the church. And there was parking spots along the edge at one point. They now made them no parking to force everyone to park back there. These are now just going to be...
Was that a request from the church to do that?
Ah, this was many years ago, long before me. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
But I think it was, they expanded their parking lot to keep the patrons up back. Now it's the... Now, it's the handicap issue is what they're running into. They have four spots in the front right now currently, and they're just, they're looking for some.
Yeah, and the back parking lots are lower elevation and stairs, and it's a distance I get that.
Yep, so.
Anybody else have any questions for Adam? Seeing as none, and be looking for a motion to approve the handicap spots as presented?
To move.
Further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All set, Adam, thank you. All right. Number 10, it's grant acceptance and possible votes. Police Department has a training grant and Police Department has a bulletproof vest partnership. Anybody care to read Nixon? So, do them separately. The first one would be the FY 24-9-11 training grant.
I'll motion to accept the FY 24-9-11 training grant in the sum of $11,410.56.
Second.
Motion's made and second, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second thing I'm looking for is a bulletproof vest or BBT grant acceptance.
I'll motion to accept the bulletproof vest partnership grant for the sum of $7,225.
Second.
Motion's made and second, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor? Aye. Seeing that we're missing two people, do we want to continue with the meeting minutes? Any feeling from you two? You agree, Tim?
Yeah, that's fine.
So.
I will say this.
Much to Lisa's disappointment, we'll be continuing, Lisa.
I will say this, I'm seeing more and more of an intermingling of the word select board, words select board and Board of Selectmen. We are a legal body, we should probably really commit to one or the other. I don't know if there's a change afoot or if we have that discussion, but.
So, on the first minutes, on the, number one, if you go at, at the end of the point 50, in the last sentence, it says both the select board and the school committee.
I'm sorry, you were pointing at top, I was looking at the header.
Yeah, well, the header's here and then we refer it to ourselves there. That might be, I had a great sixth grade teacher, Ms. Hegwig, who, she was quite old when she taught us, but consistency's important. There was legend.
So, currently, we're officially considered the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Really?
Yeah, she was a real bulldog.
Doesn't make that much.
Yeah, it's not even there, but it's everywhere. Yeah, I'm not singling out her, per se, but.
The board can choose what it wants to call itself. I will, when addressing you, refer to you as the select board, because it's 2023, and that's quite enough, thank you. There are very capable people of all persuasions who choose to serve on a board, and they are select board members. But if you want to be this picky about this, stick with Selectmen because that's what the state statute says, you are. But, you're a select board, sorry. Who cares? There are other towns that do it, I don't think it's necessary at all. And as I said to somebody earlier today, if you think there's a court in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that would invalidate anything you do because you've decided to call yourself a select board instead of select men, find that judge and I'll take that person out for dinner. But it's not gonna happen, it's silly, and, you know, I don't want to rest on tradition when tradition clearly is an exclusive preference. So, I don't say all the men, I don't say Selectmen.
Okay, so, thank you for that. So, next thing we have on our agenda, and I have to put this on because we're at that time of the year, even though we just did a contract renewal. Town administrators do a evaluation. Selectman Bonin is familiar with the, with this process, he's been doing it a number of times. This is pretty self-explanatory. Maxwell, look through it if you have any questions. You can reach out to Lisa, I would suggest that you only choose to reach out to one Selectman, you'll violate open meeting law and have a rolling quarrel. You can ask Lisa to see a previous evaluation unless the administrator has an objection to that, just to see how it was done, not for influence as to how to grade it, but to get an idea if you have any questions in that way. And I'm only going through this because I've been in your position two years ago and doing the very same thing, so. With that, I'll just leave it alone and obviously, Selectman Smith will have to go through the same process. What I'll do is I'll refer him to Lisa to ask her any questions that he may have, unless he chooses to talk to somebody else.
And just for all those watching at home, Mr. Chairman, this process is contemplated in Massachusetts' general laws and other regulations, if you will, that it is the sole responsibility of the chair of the board to gather all the evaluation instruments from all members of the board and to arrive at a single message that is then delivered in open session in public to the town administrator as the single message of the board. Your individual evaluations go into my personnel file. I can see them and other members of the board can see them, but they are actually confidential working documents as part of a personnel file. So, that process is designed to encourage people to be open and honest without having to necessarily take attribution for the comments they make. They feel strongly about something, both positive and negative, they want to be able to just put it down without being that person who says it in the discussion. This time of year is a time of year where we need to be doing evaluations for everyone so that our budget process will reflect any merit conversations that we're gonna have with any of our department heads or my role. The goals list that I'm working on is now eight pages long, and I've been through one vetting process with the department heads. It was one of the things I wanted to do for the department head evaluations, and I hope to have in mind as well, is distinguishing between the day-to-day responsibilities and making the trains run on time and getting the work done and delivering the services that we've always delivered versus, you know, significant improvements to process and outcome and, because those are, those are merit discussions that, when you go above and beyond the bare minimum of what the job is. I did write this evaluation instrument, it was approved by the select board, probably my first evaluation. I wrote it at a time when I was really, to be blunt, angry, not with the select board, but with my prior governing board and a prior job for failing to recognize what the job is. They just didn't get it, they wanted you to be a political football and they could kick you whenever they wanted to. And there's actually substantive and very clear responsibilities around these different things. I've actually circulated this to a number of my colleagues and this has really become a popular jumping off point for people that, because it captures most of what the role really is. So, it's the benefit of being forced to be thoughtful about what is the job, really. I intend to have most of my department heads not evaluated with the same weight for each of these criteria, because their jobs are all different, but to have these criteria basically always be the headers. And the concept would be that if you have eight, nine, 10 department heads and we arrive at a consensus around their performance and their evaluation, and again, this is a lesson from the past, if everybody is doing a great job, then there is no way that their boss is not doing at least a good job. And that's really also feedback for the town administrator is, if you see a consistent pattern while, around communication in different departments, well, then that's your managerial responsibility to step up and correct that, and that is how the select board should evaluate the town manager's performance, is by whether or not the department heads are performing against these different criteria. So, there is a system here that I think gels together really well. I've gotta get the goals to you, I just don't want it to languish like last year.
Right.
You know, kind of want to have it on the agenda maybe twice and then move on from there.
Yeah, and that's my goal as an individual on the board, is to try to get everything moving the way it needs to move. Somebody else has anything on the, or questions on the evaluation process? We move on to the administrator's report, please.
What are we doing that?
What's that?
The evaluation?
You can, well, you have the papers now, you can start anytime you want.
Start, then we get, once we distribute the goals, I think we can be a deeper, longer conversation.
So, this was just a discussion?
Yeah.
This is to start the ball rolling, so I personally don't want to see it run into March, I like to have it, have it done around the first of the year, realistically.
I think that was the goal in the contract.
Try to.
We said we wanted it done by January.
Yeah, try to, as the administrator pointed out, it's an important role for the budget process. Just, I think we should get going on it, that's all. So, we have it out there. When the Selectman Smith joins us, we can bring him up to speed at the next meeting and help him through the process. We're good? Any report, Mr. Administrator?
Right off the bat, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to wish everyone a happy, healthy and safe Thanksgiving. Please be careful out there, driving back and forth, the family, over the river and through the woods.
Or going to Boston during a heavy snowstorm the day before Christmas. Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving is a longstanding American tradition and it has brought families together for decades, if not centuries, and it's an important part of our secular history as a country. You know, notwithstanding the original stories, it has become something much bigger than that and it's helped, we spend time with family. The Thanksgiving meal is also an important benchmark for all of us in taking stock of how well the economy is doing and what's going on with prices. And if you haven't bought your Thanksgiving meal yet, you're in for a.
Rude awakening.
No, I don't know if it's a rude awakening, but you will definitely see a difference between last year and the year before as you assemble all these items. You just have to be mindful of the fact that, always be mindful of the fact that there are less fortunate in the community and that hats off to those merchants and to those charities that make this such a special day and reduce their prices or find a way to get meals to people, because it's a, it's really a meaningful thing. Tempted to get into a personal story, but I don't think I will. The other thing I want to do from the beginning is hats off to the Douglas Boys Soccer Team for making it to the state final and really battling, battling, battling all the way to the end. It is a very special thing to be on any high school sports team that gets that far, and I've been lucky enough to, I think, you were the division champ or state when you were?
No, we fell short.
Fell short?
Fell short.
But still, there's the way, the feeling that you got.
Legion, yeah, those were, yeah, I can claim a Legion championship.
My understanding is they fought to the end, so.
Very special time for a bunch of young athletes to work together to achieve that.
Yeah, I was actually there, I watched a fair amount of this season, actually, and kudos to that crew that represents three Final Fours in three years, right? We lost, two minutes left in what amounts to double overtime two years ago. It was waiting minutes of the semifinal game last year, and this year, penalty kicks. And, you know, there has to be a winner and a loser, and, you know, the other team put the ball in the net a little more than we did, and that's a real crushing thing for the team, because really, it's hit or miss at that point. I think FIFA, the International World Cup, they, after they go through that, will actually decide via coin toss, which is probably even more cruel. But since we're waxing poetic about, you know, glory days in high school, Alex Ferguson, the soccer coach, there's rumors that he may be stepping down after 18 years. He has been a known entity on the sidelines. Opposing teams may think he's a little crazy in his excitement, but what I can tell you from my perspective as a father and as someone that's watched that program closely, the boys have really responded to his style of coaching. At the end of the day, coaches are some of the most impactful people in a young man or young woman's life, and Alex has served this town remarkably well. I hope he continues, no, 18 years is a long time, his boy's been out for a while, but to build off of what you say, he, it was a great run for them, and every one of them should be proud.
And I feel compelled to admit it, that I am a Westport resident, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right, look at that, yeah.
I will, by way of condolences to the Douglas athletes, just point out that Westport has never won a state championship in any sport, this was the first time ever, so they got their turn. I know the evaluation thing waved at me, but I also, and a lot of these kids work at the supermarket, whatnot, you see them, they're all excited to have actually.
And they battled, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they did a, they did a good job.
Now, on to town business. There's no lack of observational skills in the town of Douglas. We all know that some of the pavement work that was done at North and Gilboa was not a very good mix of asphalt, and we are pursuing our revenues, and I think we're gonna end up in a good place. The contractor admits that it was a bad mix, and so does the provider of the asphalt. And so, I think when we get to the springtime, we're gonna see, unfortunately for some, you know, a little bit more work, we're gonna cold plane all the bad stuff up and we're gonna put new stuff back down at no expense to the town. The precise dimensions of where that's gonna happen, I'm not sure, but I think it's gonna be pretty much the entire job up to the parking lot of the mill building.
That's probably really good regrind.
It's probably gonna be really terrible regrind because it doesn't have any fines in it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'd have to heat it up and put fines in it, and even that, that's kind of like reheating mashed potatoes, it's like it's only gonna get you so far.
Wouldn't have guessed that.
The gas leak that occurred on the hill just past the bridge to the cubes and on your way to the Shell Station was cause for concern for a couple of reasons. One is, not everybody at EverSource realized that we are one of their customers now, and it took some fishing around to get the response team. Whenever there's a gas leak anywhere, there's a critical response team that's supposed to be Johnny on the spot and really address the situation, make decisions about evacuation and excavation in a very rapid manner. And it took us a while to get them to realize that they, that we're their customer and they need to come. They did work very carefully and conscientiously once they got here, and they have determined, and I'm going to quote them on this because I want to hold them to it, that the pipe did not break at a joint, it broke in the middle of the span, and it was, you know, I always gonna mess up the term, but it split down the middle, not across the pipe, but running down, parallel to the course of the pipe. And so, there's an ongoing investigation by EverSource with their contractor, Feeney Brothers, on how that. Brothers, on how that might have happened. You know, this pipe is really thick-walled, and it's manufactured to exacting tolerances, so this is not something that should have happened, it's not something that happens very commonly. What we've learned, though, is, we've had several phone calls now, and we are fully up to date with our protocol for a leak response, and the company is, is basically pledging to quote-unquote "infrared" those patches, so they're going to come with what looks like a big oven, drop it on top of the affected area, heat it up, and so that.
It's actually a really effective way to patch.
The super effective way.
They do it, you won't even notice it.
Yeah. It's unfortunate that it happened, but maybe in a way, new pavement will respond better to being the infrared. Again, I expect that to be the spring, not anytime soon. The cubes at Gilboa is approaching completion for purposes of taxation, so we only really need them to close in the building, so all the roofs, and doors, and windows, and everything closed up, all the floors poured, and we expect to be out with the tax assessor at the very last week of December, to make sure it joins the rules of new growth in fiscal 25, which is the bill. So, we are, I don't know when they're going to get a CO, but it doesn't really matter to the assessor. It matters to us, because it triggers all that stuff they're going to give us. South Street is down, binder has been put down, it's actually, now, that's just, that's a good comparison, right? So, that's beautiful binder that was put down on South Street, compares favorably to what we saw in Gilboa for a finish coat. Amarillo will be back in the spring. DOT is adamant that they can only pave with certain minimum temperatures, and we're, we're not going to be able to comply with those temperatures.
And that's too late.
So, they'll be back in the spring, but you'll notice they have loomed and seeded, and done a fair amount of finished work, just to be ready for the spring. I drove that way today, and I thought it was a really spectacular paving job in comparison. And the drainage, I just always want to make sure that people understand that we will monitor all these conditions carefully, and we'll adjust as we need to. But we have to do what the law requires us to do, which is maintain the system as originally designed and built, in order to prevent the town from seeing any liability. So, just as a flag for all of those who are participating in the master planning, the master plan process for the town, even with some of the absences we've had in community development, we are still going to press forward. So, I think we're just waiting for the school committee to name their representative, and then we'll get started.
I think we're open space.
Open space as well.
And the conference.
School committee being a big one, because I know that the school administration wants to participate in this conversation, rightfully so. But getting back to the point, stormwater management will be one of the issues that the master plan committee is going to have to wrestle with, because as we look towards the future, if this pattern were to continue, if we were to continue to have intermittent, very heavy rain and long periods of dry, that, that changes almost everything. The plants, and the animals, and everything in our environment evolved for a certain form of climate, and others evolved for a different type of climate. When we look to manage stormwater, and we want to use vegetation as our ally, and we're concerned about things like recharging aquifers, and making sure we have sufficient water for our own purposes, the way we manage this asset may be a very different perspective now than we might have had 15, 20 years ago. So, we have to be flexible about it, and think it through. You know, one of the predictions I'd like to make, getting back to pavement just for a second, and that people need to think through, is in future, it may be really, really wildly expensive to pave a road with asphalt. Asphalt is the byproduct of the process of refining raw oil from the ground, crude oil. It's to various things. We take the best of it, kerosene, the gasoline, that's what makes the money for those companies. And as we get further and further down, we're starting to get more and more to things that are more like plastic, and, and things that are off-gas, like propane is a byproduct of the refining process. If the refining industry begins to come under great stress, because it no longer has the throughput to meet the capital expenditure of that plant, those various products even get very expensive, and one would think asphalt would be one of them. So, the things we do now, we want to do so that the roadways we pave, or reclaim and pave, will last the town a really long time, and then take care of them very aggressively, with crack sealing, and careful plowing, and other regular maintenance, to make sure that the asset lasts forever. Because if this isn't a cheap byproduct now, that we can throw around every 10 years or so, because it just isn't that expensive, that's not going to be true anymore. It's already wildly expensive, it's only going to get worse. Lastly, just in terms of report, we are in full velocity in terms of our negotiations with our two larger unions on the municipal side, a police union and the fire union, and having that much of the budget in a negotiation process forces the issue of the allocation of budgetary resources to an earlier point in the budget cycle, because we have to make sure that we're negotiating in good faith at the table, and that we can back up our counters and our proposals. So, having said that, you're going to see in December, you know, a full-on update to the finance committee on the overall financial condition of the town, and the allocation of resources based upon need, and the need also to hold back some of those resources for either a capital expenditure, or a purchase of real estate, or something that we might have had to bond for, but maybe we'll have the money to do at one time this year, when that new growth comes online. Because it's important to manage the town's finances with a certain amount of headroom for growth. If you assume for a second, it's, it's a safe assumption to make until somebody tells you different, the cubes at Gilboa is the last project you're going to get, right? If the other projects materialize and pine, sand, and gravel, believe it, and thank goodness that they'll happen, but right now, for budgetary purposes and planning purposes, we'll plan for the worst, hope for the best. If that is the end, it basically is almost like a refueling of the impetus that we got from the override. We said the override would last five or six years, and it did. Now, things are starting to get tight again, but along comes cubes at Gilboa that's going to push us back up. How did we manage the last five years to get to this point now, where we have an operating budget that's balanced, and a robust capital investment program, as well as a program for retaining a certain amount of healthy reserves to defend our bond, maybe improve it? We got there by doing a couple of things. We were very conservative about adding any people, right? We took savings at every single opportunity that we could find, and we allowed for that headroom to grow, because that's the flexibility. If we have some, some bad thing that happens, we're not running around trying to chase our tail, trying to cut things that need to be funded, so that we don't get into more trouble in the future. So, we're in a good spot, but this critical decision-making process for this year is going to be about not allocating from scarcity, but allocating from a little bit of an abundance, to make sure you have a plan in place to take that abundance and stretch it out for as long as possible, and maintain decent relationships with the tax bank public that supply all of this, these resources. So, to that end, you know, we'll be looking this budget year to maintain some very modest increases on several accounts, in order to be able to fund the collective bargaining agreements, without making major changes to the bottom line of the budget. I think that's pretty much as far as we want to go right now.
Yeah, that's one, and the one thing I just want to ask you about, because I believe it's, it's completed, the access road that Selectman Bonin was passionate about, that he helped with, that's completed now, with the benefits of the.
I think it depends who you ask.
It appears to be completed right and by.
It's certainly fully operational, I think we still have some piles of regrind in the back.
Right.
That we didn't use. I know that Mr. Manaric was out there with a chainsaw, tidying up some of those little trees that were growing along the side, but I think as far as the police department's concerned, it's fully operational and useful.
And so, that, that was a big savings to the town, because we used highway, and you had the regrinds from the roads, correct?
Yeah, so, if anybody has any question about how this came about, that is exactly it. The paving company was in here reclaiming some pavement, they were hauling it to a site far away, they got into all kinds of scheduling trouble, trying to haul all that stuff, Sterling, I believe, is where they were taking it, and Bob Manaric, who does have a good eye for value, said, you know, it could save you some money and a lot of aggravation, if you just take that regrind and bring it down the street here, which is exactly what they did. So, we got a pretty good little access road out of it for minimal.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts on the highway and Bob's, Tim's, for pushing the project forward, but we actually got it completed, it seems to me.
I think it's just phase one of a bigger strategy to enhance the security of both school campuses, and access to both of them.
It's a nice win.
All right, you're all set?
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Open session for topics not readily anticipated, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Anybody have anything? Seeing as none.
Oh, hold on, as we wax poetic about the boys' basketball soccer team, should mention that the girls had also a fine season, I caught a couple of those games, they fell short, I believe, in the state semis, and they're a young team, and my money's on them to win over the next couple of years.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Anybody else? Any other teams?
No, volleyball, they, they traveled out, way out west, and gave them the number one seed a really good run. I did not go to that game. It's like, nah, two hours away.
All righty. Concluding that, that line item, we have executive session, so I would be looking for a motion to move into executive session.
Can we do that without the full board?
This is not an urgent matter.
Okay.
So, it can be discussed in the next meeting in December, first meeting of December, if you want. I might, I think.
Yeah, why don't we pass over it?
Recommend to you that all five be there for that session.
Could you put that on the next agenda, please? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second and one in favor.
Aye.
Aye.